I'm calling to order the meeting of Winter Town Council, July 17th, 2018. It is now 7:00 PM. Meeting is being held here in the Harvey Room at One Metcalf Square. We are being televised and recorded by WCAT for future showing of this meeting. And we ask anyone else in the audience if they are recording. We would like to know about it. All right, and the Winter Press Group is hearing here during a voice recording. Is that correct?
Voice recording, yes.
Voice recording. Thank you very much. Would Councilor Calhoun please read us the word of the week.
Captain Joe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Ingman.
Here.
Councilor Calhoun. Present. Councilor Christopher.
Here.
Councilor Thierry.
Yes.
Councilor Sordo. Councilor McDuffie.
Here.
Councilor LaCanti.
Present.
Vice President Boncorry.
Here.
President Beckham.
The minutes have been sent out to each and every councilor. There are minutes of two different meetings. Do we have a motion?
Three.
Three different meetings. Special meeting is regular.
I have a motion to pass all three minutes.
Have motions been made to accept all three minutes? Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? Are there any amendments? Any revisions?
Councilor President, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting yes on all of the minutes as I wasn't here for all of them. If we group them all together, perhaps I should abstain on the whole package.
That's right. That's time. We'll note that. Is there any further discussion? Have you done all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have been minored except. We will now open up for public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Sir, please identify yourself and stand up if I can.
I do. Go over. Jack, I'm Mr. Chris. I'm noticing that the one transfer of $52,000 to matching funds concerning flooding in the side park surrounding vehicles. I was under the impression that we weren't going to make any major decisions until Winter Town Manager and new planner are on board.
Correct.
So you won't be making any decision on the $52,000 tonight?
It will be sent to the Finance Committee tonight, probably to debate and bring back at the next meeting, which is, I believe, August 8th.
August 7th.
August 7th.
7th.
By that time, I believe, we will have the town manager in place. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Very easy meeting. We're going to move on to the precinct five committee report.
Yep, so we had our meeting, I think it was a little bit a week or two ago, at the Lyceum Room in the East Evin Newton School. And we had a, you know, a small group that came together, but we discussed primarily center business district zoning and suggestions that members of the community had about changes that we will make to that once we have a new town manager and planner in place. And also some, there was some comments about the infrastructure project as well, and we discussed that. And at the time, the town manager search was going on, so there was a lot of feedback given to me by members of the community about that as well. But it was a good new meeting, and we got rid of that.
Great, thank you. Any questions about it from any other councils? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Public Health and Safety Committee. Councilor Calhoun.
Yes, on July 12th, the Public Health and Safety Committee had a meeting in this room, Harvey Room. At 6:30, the meeting was called to order. In attendance was myself, committee member, Councilor Peter Christopher, Chief DeLahanty, Chief Flanagan, Assistant Town Manager Joe Doma-Lobitz, former Councilor Jeanne Maggio, Councilor Heather Eggman, and Bill Schmidt from the Public Health Committee. Absent was Nick LaCanti. And the agenda was an update on the Public Safety Building RFQ, a discussion on the marijuana moratorium, and public health updates. So the Public Health and Safety Committee, their first topic was the discussion of legalization of marijuana. On October 17th, 2017, the council voted unanimously to adopt a temporary moratorium which stated, "No retail recreational marijuana sales location be allowed to obtain any permits, licenses to open in the town until 12/31/2018." And I have a copy of that, which will be filed with the clerk. As the date is approaching, the Public Health and Safety Committee felt it was very important to open up lines of communication. The committee voted to recommend the town council hold a joint public forum to include an informational presentation with members of the planning board and a representative of the Cannabis Control Commission. It was suggested the meeting be held at the Winter High School Auditorium no later than the middle of September of this year. The committee felt this was a good time to find out if the residents/voters want to approve a retail establishment or don't want to approve one, and what the regulations/restrictions would look like if a retail store was approved. Time is of the essence if the consensus is to prepare for a special election to decide which way to go. According to the clerk's office, that process could take approximately six weeks, which would bring us into November. Chief DeLahanty and Assistant Town Manager Joe Doma-Lobitz will be doing research, reaching out to other communities, speaking to the Attorney General's Office, the Planning Board, and complimentary page our legal counsel to find out who's responsible to draft regulations and restrictions that will need to be put in place to guide the town through zoning, licensing, adopting an ordinance, or by law. Location, buffer zone, protection near schools, license taken here, and trying to confirm if the parks would also be included. Should Winter prohibit the sale of marijuana or not? And is a special election for voter input the route to take? Winter needs to be proactive and put a process in place in case the marijuana shop is approved. And we are waiting for wording and clarification of what we can and cannot do. So that was on the marijuana situation.
All right. Anything else, Captain Ingman?
Yes. So then we had an RFQ update from Chief Paul Flanagan. The engineering company Kessel Booze Associates, we're going to say KBA, has been chosen by the chief to do the Winter Public Safety feasibility study out of five companies that turned in proposals. The feasibility study is to assist the town in program development, conceptual design, and budget development of options for updated or new facilities for the Winter Fire Department and the Winter Police Department, including the possibility of a new shared facility. The scope of the facility study is to identify and select a preferred option for resolving the facility needs of both departments. Currently, $25,000 has already been appropriated for this study. The proposed cost for professional services from this particular KBA is $45,000. Minus the $25,000 already earmarked will leave an approximate balance of $20,000 to complete the study. Chief Flanagan has a meeting this week with KBA and will try to work on negotiating that figure down to possibly $15,000. However, we did discuss the value of doing it right instead of cutting corners. Just to note, the proposed fee is based on the scope of the work as noted in the proposal, which is attached and will be filed with the clerk, and does not include possible supplemental services such as land surveying, geotechnical investigation, or hazardous material identification. The Public Health and Safety Committee would like to recommend, I'm not sure how we do this, if we put it in a motion, to the council and Council President to refer this to Finance to identify a funding source in order for the study to begin. And the study could begin as soon as August of 2018. The feasibility study is long overdue and has been the topic of discussion for many years. If we can identify the funding source, KBA is prepared to begin immediately upon authorization. They anticipate approximately four months will be required to complete the study and issue the final report, of which a PowerPoint presentation of that final report will be presented to the council and the general public. And again, we're waiting on, you know, some more information on that. Public Health Department update, our Winter Public Nurse Deanna Ferretta was on vacation, so she could not make the meeting. Bill Schmidt from Public Health Board was on hand to share some state info on the marijuana situation, and he mentioned a few outfalls or an outfall in the Nahant area. Nahant Ab area should be looked at as the empty lot is not draining, which is creating, you know, concern about mosquitoes. I did have a brief discussion with our DPW director, and all of this is costly, so it's funding that's, you know, could be a problem to do anything there right now. And lastly, he mentioned that a new tattoo parlor has been approved by the board and is going to be located on Putnam Street upstairs from the Citizens Bank. Jeanne Maggio mentioned that MRC is doing blood pressure clinics. They're ongoing, so if anybody wants to reach out to her, they'll be happy to do that. Meeting was adjourned at 7:45. Respectfully submitted. That's it. And like I said, the RFQ and the motion for the moratorium is attached and will be filed.
Are you going to submit those motions so we can put them on the next agenda?
Yes, Peter Christopher and I are going to work on those.
Okay. Any other council have any questions? For Councilor Calhoun about the meeting.
Please pass this down to Nick as well.
To?
Nick.
Nick?
Yeah.
Okay, then move right into the town manager.
Oh, that's the, I need that back. I'm sorry, that particular, yeah, sorry.
Town Manager Report.
As of now, there is plans for the communities competitive grants announcement on Friday at 1:45 PM at the Senior Center, and it's anticipated that the Lieutenant Governor, the Speaker, and the Senator will be there and hosting this gathering for other communities that are also being these grants.
How many communities have come in, do you know?
I've heard as many as thirty.
At the senior, I hope we do a little better than when we had DOT grants and they came down into their wet parking lot, and we had no water or food or parking facilities for them.
No, we've already talked about that, and that's under control.
Under control.
Yeah. Okay. Additional bidding has been authorized near Royal Beach. Finance is working in the closeout. Mill Field is still in it for a shorter period of time, but then due to some of the final work, it is done and is closed, but it's expected to reopen Thursday morning for other groups. And the major meetings are included with the change.
Any questions for the town manager?
Just to follow up on the Mill Field. The Mill Field over the last week, and it ended yesterday, is that we did one of the last phases, which is the painting of the track. And I think they finished the lines yesterday, and the public hours will commence, will reopen on Thursday, and the hours for everybody to go down there and use the facility would be Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday evenings, early, late afternoon, early evening, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, no Wednesdays. Saturdays and Sundays from 7:00 AM to noon. So we encourage people to go down and use the facility, and we'll be waiting for construction of the field house to start in September hopefully.
Councilor Ingman?
Follow up questions from the council members who were of the drainage issue on Nahant and at the corner of Nahant Road, that area that I think Nahant's really been a problem recently, and I'm wondering if there is any, what would the options are for solving that problem?
Sort of the ballpark costs would be, is there anything short term and low cost that we can do, like clean the drains, clean the?
And the big lot is a, a lot is summed up.
Right.
The whole, not to do any drainage on that farm and try to shed water away from that lot, so this is kind of swimming pool kind of place. There was a catch basin on that lot that connects to the town system. I mean, we do drainage, and we do clean that. Just like every other area in town, the drainage is old, it's undersized, the outfall is in a riprap that goes behind the private property. We have easement that kind of goes through the utility easement. It's just, there's work to be done. I agree that upgrades can be made, but it's not a, it's not as simple as cleaning it because we do clean it. It's more upsizing pipes and installing duct bills and redoing outfalls and getting into a drainage project over there, much like Morton Street and some of the other areas.
Because I think that sort of that larger neighborhood drains into that one space, and I'm just wondering if there, you know, if there's anything we can do, just routine maintenance on any of the sort of drainage areas.
It doesn't drain into that space in the sense that that space is tied to the town drainage system. So there's a catch basin on that property. It's a dead-ended catch basin which would drain through the town system, but that town system surcharges because that's a, a, a open catch basin. It is a, it is a funnel to receive water. I mean, we, we could cut and cap that catch basin so the town system doesn't, if the town system surcharges, it doesn't add water to that location, but that location is a swimming pool. I don't, if you look at it, it's down about three feet from the road.
Right, no, I know, I know, I know.
Any other questions for the town manager? Just one, we had some flooding today, and can you tell us about that, Steve? What happened?
Yeah, we had flooding down on Morton Street, which is to be expected. It did evacuate pretty quickly. The drainage event happened at a high tide, and I have reached out to, you know, to try and get engineer proposals to start talking about upgrades in the Morton Street area. We know that they're all original pipes. We know that the outfalls are again undersized. We had some pounding on Walden Street. We also had some pounding in Ingleside Park. Again, short duration, heavy rainfall at high tide. It's to be expected. I can tell you that the improvements that we've made on some of our drainage, it evacuates the water a lot quicker as the tide subsides, but it does not prevent the pounding situation.
I want to thank Steve for, again, looking into Morton Street and trying to see what we could do potentially down the road down there. And also thank the TSAC for approving the stop sign at the end of Willshire going on to Morton Street. That's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Have a finish, Phil.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We don't have a school department update. Was anybody at the school committee from the council? Okay. We'll move on then to all business, and the first item on the agenda on the all business is the Poxon-Rite budget. To my understanding, yeah.
Got to table that to the August 7th meeting.
A motion to table to the August 7th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? Okay. To my understanding that the director of Poxon-Rite said until August 1st to put that budget together, and there was no Finance Committee meeting tonight to go over that, so the next meeting won't be until the 7th. So I'm going to put it to a vote. All those in favor? If they will, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Voting's awarded. All right, next thing on the agenda is town council rules and procedures. We had met, we discussed this at the last meeting. We had made some changes. Councilor Ingman put it over so that everyone would get it in their hand with the red line changes. Councilor Ingman, do you want to take over as a member of the rules of this committee?
Sure, I mean, I think the changes were all apparent from the copy that Denise sent around. I did review it when I got home from work today and noticed a couple of extra commas and things like that that I suggested Denise change, but I, I don't think we require any substantive changes from what was circulated this afternoon.
Okay, then I will entertain your motion to approve the new council rules as printed in the mailing that everyone got today.
Second that.
There's a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Voting's awarded. Okay. And the new business. First matter on the new business is the transfer of $447,991.42. And I would.
I'm going to make a motion to refer to Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Is there a time restriction?
Yes, those are the year-end transfers, so.
The forty, oh, four hundred, I thought it was the 52,000.
No, this is 447,000.
Well, what's the?
They're just departmental transfers. They're purely budgetary transactions. It's just taking from one line that has a surplus and moving it into a different line that has a deficit, so that we don't have any deficits at year-end, which would then hit us on the free cash.
Free cash.
As well as on the tax rate, so.
So I understand we received your report, but it has not been to the Finance Committee. Is there, is it an emergency situation?
We're already into the.
Well, we need to do it in order to close year-end, and if it gets referred to Finance.
It could get voted on August 7th.
And then we don't get the certified minutes until August 21st, I guess that would be. That's approaching 60 days after the close of the fiscal year, which is getting into a realm where we might have some difficulty.
Well, couldn't it be voted on at the 8th?
It could be voted on, but then we, it doesn't get official until we certify, until we approve the minutes for that meeting, the following meeting. But it is a lot of money.
It is, but it's not moving from a stabilization fund. It's just a budgetary transaction. There's no, there's nothing actually coming out of any funds. This is just making it so that all the lines within the general fund budget don't have deficits. So taking from one area where there's extra money in the budget and moving it to another area where there wasn't enough, so that just, it's a, it's an accounting transaction that we're required to do every year in order to make sure everything balances.
All right, would you explain where you are taking it from and where you're putting it to, and we can determine whether the council wants to take it as an emergency motion?
Well, I could just explain where the deficits are. School employee benefits, deficit of $296,255.34. Town managers' budget deficit, $20,766.60. Grants office deficit, $6,116.88. Fire department deficit, $94,298.92. Shared expenses deficit, $1,260.69. And retirement, Department 911 deficit, $29,293.09, which is a total of $447,991.52. So the funding sources to offset these deficits would come from the regional dispatch account, which has a balance of $154,958.40, and we would take all of that to have the balance at zero. The reserve fund appropriation, which there's still a balance of $117,600. We would take that and put that to zero. The group insurance retiree would, has a balance now of $87,430.50. We would take $24,957.63, which would still have a balance of a little over $62,000. Town attorney line has a balance now of a little under $31,000. We would take a little over $20,000 to have a remaining balance of a little over $10,000. Finance personnel has a balance of a little over $16,000. We would take a little over $6,000, remaining $9,900 and change. Police personnel has a balance of $116,000. We would take roughly $94,000, leaving $21,000. And the payment to veterans line has a balance of $41,000 and change. We would take a little over $29,000, leaving $11,700. My question on this is on, it looks like there's a reserve fund appropriation of $117,000 that you want to take off. There were contract adjustments that were made and voted on by the council. Have all those been satisfied for fiscal year 2018 with these funds?
Yes.
So everybody's been paid their?
Well, we have the transfers all set up. We're waiting until the minutes get.
Okay. I guess what I'm, the funds are accrued.
The funds were encumbered until the minutes were approved tonight.
Okay. So they will be dispersed. So we won't be using 2019 reserve appropriation to pay the 2018. I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct, and that this account would get liquidated at the end of the year anyway.
It wouldn't go into free cash anyway, right. I just wanted to make sure that the 2000, because I didn't think that they had been dispersed yet, I wanted to make sure that they weren't being paid with 2019 funds.
Correct.
So are you making your motion as an emergency?
I would make a motion as an emergency to.
To approve this decision?
To approve the, I'm just looking for the actual motion, to approve the motion that the council transfer $447,991.52 from department budgets to department budgets for the purpose of covering departmental deficits in accordance with Mass. General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 33B, or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, is there any discussion by the council? Is there any discussion?
Council President, can you explain this a little bit more to me? I was prepared to vote on, you know, $400,000 transfer today. Where exactly are we transferring from and where is it going to and why?
I think that's what Jim just read. Do you have it here with the motion?
So we're transferring from the fiscal year 18 budget into the equivalent lines on the fiscal year 19 budget?
No, no, no. This is to close out the fiscal 18 budget. So if there were lines in deficit, we needed to take money from other departments with a positive balance to offset the negative balance to make it zeroed out. And that would affect our tax rate, and it would also affect our free cash for, in the fall. So this is all fiscal 18 money. This is not fiscal 19 money.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not touching the fiscal 19 budget, and we're not taking from any reserve fund or anything else. We're taking from line items that had a positive balance.
And putting them into the 19 budget?
No, putting them into the 18 budget to cover any deficits.
This is all to close out fiscal year 18.
Right.
When you got to June 30th, the finance personnel looked at the various accounts. Prior to that, they also looked at it, but they identified certain accounts with deficits, certain accounts.
Like these.
With surpluses.
Okay.
And what is required by, by the state is that we close out fiscal year 18 by taking whatever surpluses we have available to cover the deficits, because the only thing you're allowed to deficit spending is snow and ice. So you've got to cover it somehow.
So bottom line, the total, what the general fund adds up to, does not change. What this does is it just moves budgetary amounts from an area where there isn't enough to an area that has more than enough, and the net of all of those is zero, so it has no impact on the bottom line. But because of the way the financial rules are, if we spend more than was budgeted, that's a deficit, which will negatively impact our free cash as well as our following year's budget on the tax rate. So it's, you get double penalized for having these deficits, which is why we wanted to make sure this was done tonight.
And that's by the motion that Jim Maturi made, as regular as an emergency motion, so we can close our books, get it into the state, and it doesn't affect our cherry sheet figures coming back?
Not the cherry sheet.
No.
Come on. All right, any further discussion? Have you now take a roll call vote?
No, we seconded it, yeah. You made it.
No, I thought, oh, I don't know.
Pete's second.
Okay.
All right, take a roll call vote.
Councilor Ingman, yes. Councilor Calhoun?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Thierry?
Yes.
Councilor Sordo? Councilor McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorry?
Yes.
President Beckham, absent. Motion passes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a transfer of $52,266 from Capital Stabilization Fund to a new special article for the purpose of funding a town match of municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant, an award received of $156,799 for the purpose of developing alternatives to mitigate flooding in the Ingleside Park and surrounding neighborhood or take any other action too. Is there a motion on this?
I'd make a motion to refer to Finance. I'd make a motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here we now...
Uh, just a quick question. What exactly is the grant going to do? Is it... is it a sort of a study?
This is just a feasibility study to see what alternatives there are, if it passes, if it was to pass.
Can you speak up, Joe, or you got a question?
No, he's got...
Oh, okay.
So, what I'll try to do is it's to finance the study, feasibility study, and also to design work and permit it, correct?
Yes.
No, that makes sense. I just wanted to know more specifically what the nominee was going for.
Yeah, it came with us, with the cost analysis information, the alternative sources. I think the, uh, Mike Burris pretty much explained it.
I mean, I just wasn't sure if it was engineering work, if it was design work, but what exactly it was. So, that was my question.
It's to gather information for additional engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Here we none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
So, that's just to refer to finance.
Yes, to refer to finance, correct. Okay, next, uh, issue is, uh, contract negotiations with the two new town manager. As my understanding, that, um, the council president has retained Howard, who's our labor attorney, to work up a contract with, uh, the person that he has chosen to put in as town manager. They are meeting, I believe, next week and discussing what that contract is going to be. I am sure that he will bring that contract to us before he does an actual hiring and before it's approved, although I don't believe he has to. I believe it's completely within his power to hire the new town manager and pay for him with money that's been put into the budget for the next year.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
Has, um, Austin Faison, has he accepted the nomination?
I do not know. I think that's part of what's going on right now.
Okay.
I know that, uh, a contract is being drawn up. I don't believe it's been negotiated as to amounts or whether or not he's accepting it, but there is going to be a contract put together, as I said, by our labor counsel Howard, and he will be putting it before. Okay? The next issue on the agenda is the independent audit, and that came in today. Everybody has that independent audit, uh, with them. And I entertain a motion to table action on that till the next meeting, so that everybody will have an opportunity. It's a three booklet audit, and you're all receiving it for the first time when you sat down tonight. So, I would, uh, entertain a motion to table discussion on the audit till the next meeting.
Motion is tabled.
Motion tables were made by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Calla. Any discussion on that? Here we now... Just for, uh, city, uh, town council's information, the auditors will be here at your next meeting on August seventh to make a brief presentation on the audit and answer any questions you have regarding... All right, so everybody, please try to digest it, and we will, uh, address it on the seventh. All those in favor of the motion to table until the seventh signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Here we none, voting so ordered. Okay. The next, uh, issue on new business is a motion that came out to direct town manager to provide reports, D P W maintenance schedule, twice yearly. Whose motion is that?
Council President, it's my motion.
Okay.
So, um, if I may sort of read the text. The motion is that the town council direct the town manager to provide a twice yearly report listing the Department of Public Works capital assets, the maintenance schedule of those assets, and documentation of all maintenance activities performed in the previous six-month period to the Town Council Subcommittee for Capital Assets by the last days of June and December of each year, beginning in December of two thousand and eighteen, or take any other action thereto. And a little bit of context on my motion. This comes about from last winter, when, um, the D P W several trucks were unable to pass inspection and had to be taken out of, um, out of circulation. And that was, uh, very difficult for us during, I think, snow removal and many other town activities. And I originally offered this as an amendment to, uh, the motion last council meeting, when we approved a D P W truck to be approved. Um, I think it's appropriate, um, for the town council to begin, um, slightly greater supervision of the capital assets of this town, so that we can, um, calculate accordingly when we're putting together budgets for future years. And, um, I think, um, the purchase of a new D P W truck is a good time for the council to, um, get a little more involved with our capital assets.
I'd like to make a motion to refer to capital assets.
Motion to be made to refer to capital assets, and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I have a discussion.
Yes.
So, this, um, this motion here is only directed at the D P W. However, we have vehicles in the fire department, the police department, and the maintenance, I think, departments. So, is this something that's going to be requested across the boards?
Uh, Councilor Calla, if I may, um... So, my original thinking on this amendment and now motion was just sort to go along with the D P W truck purchase. But, um, if you were to make an amendment to this motion to, um, have it cover more towns, more departments in town, I would certainly support that.
The issue is whether or not this motion is going to the Capital Assets Committee. And that's all that's in front of us, is whether or not it's going to the Capital Assets Committee at this time. Capital Assets Committee can have interviews, a meeting on it, a hearing on it, and determine if they want to add things or subtract things from that committee and come back. But the only issue before us right now is should this motion, as it's written, go to the Capital Assets Committee? That's the main seconded, you want to discuss that?
To follow up on Councilor Calla's point, uh, you know, I think that it makes sense to take a look at all of our vehicles and capital assets and make sure that we are, um, keeping up with the maintenance and providing the funding for our departments, so that they are able to do it, to maintain the equipment as they need to. So, I certainly don't think that we want to, um, exclude the other departments or single out D P W. It's... The idea is to just take a broader look at, um, at our capital assets.
And I have one more, um, comment. Is this something that's necessary to be done twice a year, or can this just be done once a year?
Well, that's what I hope the committee will determine.
Okay.
Okay. Any other? All those in favor of sending this to the Capital Assets Committee, signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Vote so ordered.
Okay, now, we have a petition to purchase this in town land on, um, Shirley Street, between four thirteen and four fifteen. And there is a letter that has come from, uh, K B G Capital through their attorney, James Cippeletta, requesting that we do so. Now, it's my understanding that the town manager owns all the land in town. It's the only person that can sell any land or purchase any land for us. But I would suggest that somebody would make a motion to send this to a committee that will review it and come back with meetings with the town manager, whether it's this one or the new one, and make a determination as to whether we're going to sell this piece of property or not.
Finance. Motion to refer to finance?
Finance. Motion to refer to finance, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that motion?
Uh, Council President, I'm wondering, um, from where do you derive the opinion that it's exclusively the town manager's decision on whether or not to sell this land?
From the law.
Okay, which one?
Mass. General Law has given the town manager the authority to sell and purchase land as our administrator.
Uh, Council President, um, I imagine this would be discussed in the Finance Committee Subcommittee, but how do they make a determination of value without land being less than thirty-five thousand dollars? Is that... Someone from the town who...
The town will look at this, staff will look at this, you know, we want to...
So, it hasn't not yet been...
It has not been reviewed by staff. This was addressed to the town council. So, it's just addressed to the town council. We put it on the agenda, so you can see. Now, you're referring it to committee. Once it goes to committee, the staff can look at this, because we haven't done any research of, is this really land of low value?
Mm-hmm, that's my point.
And if it is land of low value, uh, then it falls into an area where I think, remember, he's correct, the town's treasure really gets involved in selling it, okay, between that. If it's not...
But we do have to sign the deed.
Yeah, we do. But in terms of if it's not land of low value, then it gets into the issue of, you know, to be authorized to sell it, and then generally somebody in the town that gets a set will set the value. You know, if it's a big piece of property, like the school, then you're going to go out and hire an appraiser, like, uh, professional appraiser. But for a small piece of land such as this, probably something more sophisticated.
We have...
Sold land. We sold land on this same strip down the road from it. We sold land, um, behind Lewis Lake.
Mm-hmm.
So, and there was a big period of time, I think, we had put Dave Stacio in charge, representing the town and negotiating the prices for the pieces that we bought land. It came to the council, but the final person that signs the deed and sells the land is the town manager. Okay?
Um, town manager, I understand that that land is nine feet by... I don't know the other measurement, because I didn't print it. By how many?
Hundred and fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen, so nine by hundred and fourteen. So, my concern is that, um, that's directly on Veterans Road, and we have angle parking there in the wintertime. And I think you could get, you know, several cars there if the town kept it, because I don't think the cars are longer than nine feet long. I mean, you know, so, you know, we're going to give up land that the town, you know, could possibly... It's valuable, I think, for people in the neighborhood and people that need parking.
Well, that's what...
This is on the Shirley Street side, right?
No, it's on the Veterans... It's on Veterans Street. You can get to it from Shirley, because they have a driveway or something that goes, cuts through it.
That's one of the things also generally, before you sell property, you usually go around and check with the other departments, boards, if there's any interest in retaining it for a municipal purpose. So, if, say, for example, D P W Police Department felt that that would be land of value for parking or for utilities, then they, in a sense, could put a hole on that and tell them not to say, "We're going to sell."
I mean, just because someone's petition to buy it doesn't mean we have to authorize it anyway.
Yeah.
But I think we should look into that. I'd hate to see us lose that land if that's valuable parking, you know, that the town needs.
Yes.
Yeah.
This motion is...
This motion has been made to refer to finance, to have them look at it, and, uh, is there some other discussion? Uh, what? Let's see. A vote, all those in favor, to refer to finance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Voting so ordered. Next thing is a discussion of the extension of the Mass. D E P project. And this was a letter sent by town manager's requestment on the, um, June twenty-first. I believe that's what we're discussing. All right, you want to... It's just informative for the town council as well as the public that, um, we have requested an extension of the deadline to October, and they've given us that authorization. But, uh, it really means that whatever determination we're made is all going to have to be wrapped up by, really, uh, October fifth, in terms of this whole issue. And this is the four, one, two, and all alone. So, that's what it is. Did you get it as updated on the project? Uh, did you get the report from, you know, the current concerning, uh, the technical hazardous materials in the area? Maybe you find some. It will require certain methodologies related to construction and how to utilize, store in. But they still felt that they'd be doing it in, dropping the contingency from nine-hundred to seven-hundred thousand dollars. Now, what we're waiting for is determine what happens in terms of the archaeological report. So, hopefully, we'll have something by the end of this month. If it's on a thirty-day review, if it goes on a sixty-day review, then we're going to involve us.
Thank you.
There was no action to be taken by the council. This is only inform... information. And probably should have came out of the town manager's report rather than new business, so that we don't carry this new business going down the line. Okay. The next issue is a petition by the Retirement Board asking us to adopt Mass. General Law's Chapter thirty-two, Section twenty-eight, which would, um, indemnify members of the board from decisions they make. I would entertain a motion to send that to rules and ordinance.
Motion to send to rules and ordinance.
A motion's been made by Councilor Terry to send it to rules and ordinance. Is there a second by Peter Christopher? Any discussion on that? Here we none, all those in favor sending it to rules and ordinance? Vote aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Voting so ordered, goes to rules and ordinance. Uh, Councilor... Council President Ron Vecchia left two motions for appointments, uh, to the Cultural Council. And the first motion is that the Cultural Council accept the appointment made... At the town council, accept the appointment made by the town council president, Ron Vecchia, to appoint Linda Rainville as a member of the Cultural Council for a term to expire June thirtieth, uh, twenty-twenty-one, or take any other action thereto.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Jim Littori to approve the president's recommendation, seconded by Linda Calla. And, uh, any discussion on Linda Rainville? I know that she was on the board before. She took a year off and is now coming back on, at Ron's request. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered, Linda Rainville is now on the board. And now I will pass the gavel to Jim Littori and recuse myself from the next motion that I think someone is going to make.
Okay, there's another motion coming from Council President. A motion that the town council accept the appointment made by the town council president, Ron Vecchia, to appoint Goldie Boncorry as a member of the Cultural Council for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Calla, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Christopher. Any discussion on the motion?
I just think, I think Goldie was on that. Uh, she's been involved in...
She has.
Yeah, memberships there, so she's familiar with that. I think she'll be a good addition.
Any other discussion? Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Oh, good job. Thank you.
Pass it back.
Abstention, yes.
Oh, I...
He recused himself, so he was not even... He was not even in the room.
I wasn't in the room.
He wasn't in the room.
I wasn't in the room. We'll reopen now for public comment. Is there any public comment? Please.
Pleasure. Morgan, stand up. Thank you very much.
Well, please identify yourself and speak up if you're not going to spin.
Jacked out, facing three. I have a question on the N D P grant. If the N D P is here, maybe if it could be answered at the finance.
I can't hear you.
Yeah.
I have a question on the N D P grant match.
Okay.
If it can't be answered here, I'd like to be answered at the finance committee, which is what day? Finance committee?
Oh, the meeting will be August seventh, then six o'clock. In here, in this room.
Okay, the question is, um, there were two grants submitted to the N D P grant match. One wasn't approved. Which one wasn't approved? What was the grant that wasn't approved?
Ward Street.
Ward Street. Because it was my understanding, I was at the meeting that was at the, uh... Dear Ivan? Where this was first, I brought up this grant, and I read a little bit about it tonight. That really con... That really concerned flooding from global warming. It's my understanding of that meeting. Doesn't, doesn't, you know, flooding is like, ah, it can happen anytime. It happens from the rain, like we had today or what we had a couple of months ago. So I thought this money was supposed to be used to prevent flooding, coastal flooding. Say at Moore Street, at Pico Park, at Bayview, and at Grandview, a lot, a lot of homes were inundated there. I don't think there's as many neighborhood homes inundated by flooding at Ingleside Park. I'm wondering why the one at Moore Street wasn't accepted.
Well, do you have an answer, Joe, as...
Town manager?
I, I did the state gave determination based on what the one that spans the resources on. We, we were allowed to find the resources we wanted to, we kept to do because we had to provide, were very deserving, equally necessary, and the state chose to fund the except our grant, you know, that.
Do you have an identification for the state that the finance committee, what other do you, concerning why it was denied?
They didn't say why it was denied, just that marriage was, you know, or the other one that was...
You're going to be on the moving, the litigation or...
We're not having a conversation, Jack.
So that's the finance committee?
Yeah, and the finance committee will be hearing on that issue.
And I would request any, if any correspondence we have from the state on those two grants to please be available for the finance committee.
And whoever the letter came from, maybe a phone call to get a further answer. Any other public comment? Hearing none, just wanted to announce that the Ingleside Park Summer Concerts Program is starting up, and they will be held on July 19th, July 26th, and August 2nd. There are other committee openings that are available, and if you go on the website or you call the council clerk at 617-846-1752, extension 1034, you can apply for one of these committees. I mean, Ron, Council President Ron Vecchia wants to fill every committee that has an opening, and hopefully we will get some more enthusiastic winter bikes that will join us in being part of government. When, with that said, does any council have anything to say before adjournment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I have one thing to just ask. I know we had a couple of, sorry, trying to keep it under an hour, I know. But we had a couple of, you know, just to let the public know, and us too, we had a couple of closings, Yoro Beach, and then, well, we had Donovan's Beach and Yoro Beach. Everything is good. How often do they do testing?
I think at least a couple of times a week.
Okay.
I think it'd be daily, a couple of times a week. My guess is, do you guys see a...
I don't know. Certainly we've been, I don't know if you have.
I would say it's definitely, but it could be more than twice a week or so.
Thank you, Sean.
Any further comment from any councils? If no, I...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor McDuffie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's our new record.
Aye.